One minute until we go live.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to go ahead and call the meeting to order and remind anyone who is in attendance tonight, if they wish to speak later, had not signed up in the back of the room, to please do so now. Jennifer, may we have the roll, please?
Yes. Chairperson Bocherd.
Excused.
Vice Chair McConnell.
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Present.
Commissioner Colling.
Present.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Commissioner Tomacek.
Present.
Commissioner Mayo.
Here.
Commissioner Zhang.
Present.
Commissioner Torres.
Excused.
Roll call complete.
Thank you. We do have a quorum for tonight's meeting, so all members in attendance will be voting on tonight's matter. The first item we need to take care of tonight would be consideration of minutes from our April 26th meeting. Do I have a motion? Commissioner Colling, thank you. Second.
Second.
Commissioner Dunn, second. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Chair McConnell.
Yes.
Vice Chair McConnell is in favor. Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter is in favor. Commissioner Colling.
Yes.
Commissioner Colling is in favor. Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn is in favor. Commissioner Tomacek.
Yes.
Commissioner Tomacek is in favor. Commissioner Mayo.
Yes.
Commissioner Mayo is in favor. Commissioner Zhang.
Yes.
Commissioner Zhang is in favor. Vote is complete.
And the minutes from our previous meeting are approved. Next item. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, any comments were accepted electronically and via voicemail, and delivered to the planning commission and posted the public agenda packet online prior to the meeting. And I want to note that we did not receive any after the meeting and anything that we had received previous to is in the packet. Those who wish to give comments and signed up in advance, per the online guidelines, will be called upon in order to speak during the live meeting. And of course, we have no one on, we have no one waiting in the queue, do we? There is one item on tonight's agenda. Item 3A, Public Hearing and Action on the Annexation of 1.345 Acres of Unincorporated Adams County and Associated Establishment of a Comprehensive Plan Designation and Municipal Zoning in Conformance with Westminster Station Specific Area Plan adopted in May 2017. Stephanie, please begin your presentation.
Thank you. So, good evening, Commissioners. I'm a senior planner with the City of Westminster in Community Development. Thank you for having me this evening. Tonight, we're here to talk about, as you had mentioned, the property addressed at 6971 Federal Boulevard. We're here to talk about the annexation of that property, establishing a comprehensive plan, land use designation, and a zoning designation. Next slide, please. In advance of bringing this project before you, a staff agenda memo has been created, and tonight's public hearing has been properly noticed. I just realized I wasn't on camera. Okay, thank you. Tonight's PowerPoint presentation and public notices mailed, posted, and published in the Westminster window are hereby entered into the public record at this time. The notices of the public hearing included 47 properties and 33 owners within 500 feet of the parcel under consideration tonight. The notification boundary map and list of property owners notified within the boundary have been included as Attachment 6 with tonight's agenda memo. The city has also posted the hearing date and time on its website. Certification of signed posting has been provided to the planning commission to enter into the public record this evening. Next slide, please. So here's a vicinity map of the proposed development. Subject property, again, addressed at 6971 Federal Boulevard, 1.345 acres. The property is currently under the jurisdiction of unincorporated Adams County and is bound by Federal Boulevard on the east. You can see it here in this image. It's surrounded in red with a white overlay. Adams County is directly across the way, as you can see labeled, and it is surrounded by the Westminster Station area. Next slide, please. So on the left is a map of the city's jurisdictional boundary, shown in this heavy purple line with a white overlay. The hatched parcel is a property under consideration this evening and is considered an enclave. This is the annexation map submitted by the applicant on the right, demonstrating the annexation boundary line right of way in the City of Westminster's contiguous boundary. So you see the hatch line and then the red arrow that pulls out showing where that boundary is exactly, that parcel. Next slide, please. So Section 1151 of the Westminster Municipal Code, which I'll refer to as WMC, contains four criteria that are to be considered when reviewing petitioned annexations into the City of Westminster per the Colorado Revised Statute, Section 31-12-101. So first off, the petition for annexation must be submitted to the city and signed by the persons comprising more than 50% of the landowners in the area and owning more than 50% of the area, excluding public streets and alleys, and any land owned by the annexing municipality. Two, 1/6 contingency must exist between the annexing municipality and the property requesting to annex. Three, a community of interest exists between the area proposed to be annexed and the annexing municipality. And four, a substantial compliance hearing must be held before a city council. Staff finds that the application is eligible for annexation under Section 3112-101 of the CRS. The applicant provided a complete petition with the required singular property owner signature, because it's just one piece of property. The site meets 100% of the contingency of Westminster's jurisdictional boundaries and will reside within an urbanized area under the regulatory guidance of the Westminster Station Area Specific Plan District. Staff has also scheduled a substantial compliance hearing to be held before city council on July 25, 2022. Next slide, please. So next, we're going to get into the comprehensive plan and zoning maps. The map on the left shows the proposed land use designation for the comprehensive plan to mixed-use center. So the area is identified in yellow on the map. The surrounding land uses include our traditional mixed-use neighborhood district east, mixed-use center to the north, south, and west. And the map on the right shows the proposed zoning to specific plan district or SPD. Some of the surrounding zoning districts include industrial to the northeast and specific plan district to the northwest and south. Next slide, please. So I'm looking at these types of amendments for comprehensive plan land use designation. Section 11521 of the Westminster Municipal Code contains 10 criteria that are to be considered when reviewing these types of amendments to the plan for the proposed land use designation. The six bulleted points summarize the 10 criteria, and I'm going to go through those for you. So Criteria 1 through 3 require that the amendment is consistent with the vision, policies, and intent of the comprehensive plan and other adopted plans, serves a substantial public purpose, and will not be detrimental to surrounding properties, and shall consider any impacts to neighboring lands to ensure that new designation is not substantially inconsistent with the surrounding uses in the area. The proposed amendment addresses all three of these criteria, because the land use designation of mixed-use center aligns with the identified use within the Westminster Station focus area of the comprehensive plan. Additionally, the amendment will conform with the policies, standards, and guidelines adopted in the Westminster Station Area Specific Plan. This district and properties within it surround the subject property. Criteria 4 through 6 require that the amendment is necessary in order to address substantially changed conditions in the area or to fix a map error in the existing comprehensive plan, provides for physical and orderly growth of the city, and furthers an important public policy, such as historic preservation or reduction in water demand. Staff finds the amendment addresses Criteria 4 through 6 by designating the subject property the same land use as the surrounding properties to the north, south, and west that were given a mixed-use center land use with the 2013 comprehensive plan update. In addition, the area was zoned specific plan district in 2017 and will be required to follow the same SPD regulations as the surrounding properties to provide physical, orderly growth of the city. Criteria 7 through 10 require the amendment proves that the existing designation would be difficult to develop based on the unique characteristics of the property. Will not negatively impact the city's core services or external reviewing agencies and will not have negative environmental impacts. Staff finds the amendment addresses Criteria 7 through 10 by allowing the parcel to develop with the adjoining three properties to the northwest and south. The combination of the four parcels allows for a simpler site plan. And if the parcel were left in unincorporated Adams County, its small size and access would prove to be difficult to develop. The amendment also requires the property to develop under the Westminster Station Area Specific Plan and further the adopted vision and policies of creating a transit-oriented development. Slide 8, please. So next, we get into Section 1153 and 11520 of the WMC, which provides a total of six criteria that shall be reviewed when the city considers the establishment of zoning generally and zoning to specific plan district. So they have been summarized for you on this slide. The proposed zoning amendment needs to be consistent with the vision, intent, and applicable policies of the comp plan, specifically 11475 regarding focus areas, Section 11520 regarding the specific plan districts, and all other applicable provisions of the code. The amendment needs to ensure that there is either existing capacity in the streets and drainage and utility systems exist to accommodate the proposed plan or the plan amendment. Staff finds that the proposed establishment of zoning to specific plan district for the subject property is in conformance with the city's comprehensive plan Westminster Station focus area and the policies, standards, and sound planning principles established within the specific plan area. Additionally, the proposed zoning amendment is in alignment with the city's existing capacity for street, drainage, and utility systems. The Westminster Station Area Specific Plan will ensure that the development does not exceed the allowable density, building height, and unit count established in the plan approved by city council in 2017. Next slide, please. So the proposed application before your consideration this evening meets the city's strategic plan priority of fostering a shared sense of community by incorporating private land into the City of Westminster under the specific plan district. The addition to the city will work towards the vision for a transit-oriented neighborhood with a diversity of uses, housing types, commercial, retail, and access to mass public transit within a walkable community. The city's strategic plan priority of providing robust infrastructure is met by incorporating the zoning of a parcel of land into the city to enable complete sidewalk multimodal improvements along Federal Boulevard, once the property is in for review and develops in the future. Next slide, please. Staff recommends holding a public hearing to review the proposed annexation, land use amendment, and establishment of zoning. Staff recommends the planning commission recommend that city council approve the annexation of the 1.345 acre property addressed at 6971 Federal Boulevard, conditioned on city council finding that the petition filed by the applicant substantially complies with the statutory requirements. Secondly, staff recommends the planning commission recommend city council approve the comprehensive plan designation to mixed-use center for the property addressed at 6971 Federal Boulevard. And finally, staff recommends planning commission recommend city council approve the establishment of zoning for the property addressed at 6971 Federal Boulevard to specific plan district. Next slide, please. So this concludes staff's presentation this evening, and the applicant has a presentation prepared for planning commission this evening. Go ahead and introduce yourself.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Brian Blotovich. I'm with Sherman Associates. We're the owner of the property. I tell you, it's really, I've got so used to doing Zoom. This feels so weird. It's my first one I've done in person for like five years, so. And, you know, I'm wearing pants this time, so. Well, I wear pants, sorry. Shorts is what I usually, don't go without pants, sorry. But anyway, so now this feels weird. It felt totally weird when I was doing it on Zoom. So, sorry. A little shaking it off a little bit. So, yeah, I'll start. Next slide, please. So a little bit about Sherman. I'm going to go through a little bit of what, how long we've owned it, kind of history, and why we would like to get it annexed for a project. So Sherman, we bought the property in 2015. And we've been doing development for over 40 years. We're a long-term holder. Our CEO, Jory Sherman, started, I think it's exactly 40, 42 years ago, doing development of a variety of different projects, from residential to office to hotels. We actually can do Starbucks. We do in some of our mixed-use process projects. We also, one of our goals is to develop communities, be part of the community. We started in Minneapolis, been there for a very long time, moved to Des Moines, and then came out to Westminster to do two projects. One was Cent was the first one, in downtown Westminster, and then Aspire, which is in Leesup right now, another mixed-use project. We own those. We hold on term. We do sell when it comes up with their long-term holders. We also own, we do affordable projects. We have Phoenix on the Facts, which is a project we did in Denver 2012, and that's a pure affordable project. And we do many in, in many apps. We're actually looking at doing much more here if we can, so. Next slide, please. The property history. It was the Elixir Industrial Park, and obviously that was before my time. I'm actually fairly recently hired on with Sherman. I've been about a year and a half, so. There was, in terms of environmental, on the site, there was a no further action done before we brought, bought the property. And then it eventually, we tore down the buildings because there was a fire that started in the existing industrial buildings, and so we tore those down. And currently, it is a vacant site with, it does have the foundations and asphalt and things there, but right now it's vacant site fenced in. Next slide, please. Just to give a little idea of the property, we own the properties surrounding, not all the way around, but adjacent to the parcel. You can see that in the orange. And so this, annexing this in and being part of the development will just allow us to do a more continuous project that will hopefully provide more impact to the area and to the station itself. Next slide, please. Again, for the annexation, we, just to give you an idea where the site that we own, it is the site in black with the dashed line. It is part of the Westminster Station Area Specific Plan, so we do want to get it rezoned, so it matches our other zoning that will allow us to do the project. Next slide, please. For the comp plan amendment, again, it's the little bitty rectangle there. That's not part of it yet. And it'd be mixed-use center. The project we're looking at would be mixed use, probably with apartments and residential, which you'll see on the next slide, and that would allow us to do that and provide the parking and everything required as well. Next slide, please. This is for the rezoning. It's probably repetitive to what we had already presented from Stephanie, but just to give you an idea, that is, that is the parcel in orange that we, that we would own in the rectangle in the middle there. That would be part of the specific area plan, as it matches everything surrounding that specifically. Next slide, please. And then this is just to give an idea of what we would potentially do on the, on the parcel, which will, getting that parcel annexed in allows it to be a much bigger piece. There we can do really kind of foresighted architecture around it, allows us to get the parking and density. This is schematic. If you go to the next slide, it'll give you a little bit better idea of what, what we are looking at. This is just bubble diagrams, but the idea would be apartments with, the red is retail and commercial. On the corners, there's a, there would be a parking structure in the middle that would have, house the parking for the project. Courtyards, a variety of things like that, all in concept matching everything that's required in the specific area plan. We'll obviously need to go through site plans and middles and do the whole typical process once we go in that direction. Idea, this, this right now is roughly 270 units, 18,000 square feet of retail, and then for over 400 parking spaces for, that would serve both the residential and the retail. That is, that is all I had. Obviously, if there's questions, please, please ask.
Thank you, Mr. Blotovich. I appreciate that presentation. Commissioners, do we have any questions at this time? I mean, Tracy?
I'm just curious. So this is 1.3 acres. What is the other property? What is the total acreage?
Total acreage, all combined would be 4.1.
Commissioner Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one quick question, Mr. Blotovich. What are your plans? I mean, you might not be in that far yet. What are the building plans with regard to energy, and will there be any sustainability or renewability?
Yes. So we, as part of Sherman, one of our goals is energy efficiency and sustainable design. We actually own, in Minnesota, we built a six-acre solar farm to power some of our apartments there. Our project in, in downtown Westminster, they are LEED certified. We've our aspire just got to prove that it's LEED, I believe, silver for that one, but that would continue through all of our projects. We do, we do either LEED or if things change, we kind of follow those, those principles as we go through.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is more of a question for staff. I wanted to ask about, since this is outside of the water, of the city right now, have we planned for the water supply for this parcel? Is there any concerns about that and, and the development?
Tracy, I can answer that for you. So the Westminster Station Area Specific Plan has a cap on the total allowable number of units to be developed, specifically 1,340 units. So currently, under review right now, we have 222 under review to be entitled. One is actually already entitled. That's where the garage wrap is, directly across the way from the platform. So this is accounted for within that total.
Great. Okay, I think that's, that was my major question. Thank you.
Any other questions from commission at this time? Okay. Seeing there are no, thank you, Mr. Blotovich. I appreciate it. Seeing that there are no additional questions from commission, I'd like to open the public testimony portion of the meeting. I'd like to remind people that your testimony will be limited to five minutes per speaker, so please come prepared. Mr. Palmer, you wish to speak?
What are they worth to you, dear? Good evening. John Palmer. Just point of clarification. Tonight's hearing is only regarding the annexation and the rezoning, correct? Doesn't have anything to do with the bubble drawings and how many parking spots and how many units. Is that correct?
I can answer.
Stephanie?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, you're correct. It's only regarding the annexation, zoning, and comprehensive plan designation of that parcel.
Okay. So any further plans we'll go through? Let me back up. Will this also need to be approved at city council level?
It will need to go through the development review process.
I'm talking tonight's process.
Oh, this, well, yeah. It has, it has a couple hearings scheduled. We have to do a substantial compliance hearing for the annexation on the 25th, and then we have the first reading scheduled for September 12 for the annexation, comp plan, and zoning.
Okay. And then further, when the planning actually goes in, that'll be planning commission, and again, approved by city council. I'm just concerned with the size of the acreage. I don't know what the new language is going to set forth there. Any indication that these will all still go through city council? Any indication that these will all still go through City Council?
So at a, at a recent study session with the City Council, the City Council instructed the city manager to bring forth a resolution that would require the city manager to elevate all multifamily official development plans to the City Council for review. That's in process. That'll be a few more weeks probably before it reaches the City Council. Some further discussion with our legal staff on how that would apply to the specific plan districts will need to take place before we advance that. Specific plan districts are unique because it says that, that the city manager shall approve official development plans. So understanding that the City Council wants to see all multifamily official development plans, we've got a little bit of work there before we bring it fully to the.
Yeah.
One other question.
That's the intent.
How many public signs were posted on or about the property?
One sign.
And that would be located on federal or?
Yeah, that was located on the only front edge the property had.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Since my keen eye tells me that there's no one else in the audience that wishes to come forward and speak, I'd like to go ahead and close the public testimony portion of the meeting. And if there had been any questions for the applicant, I would have offered you an opportunity to respond to those, but there were none. Okay, so let's go ahead, and I would like to, we've closed the public hearing, I'd like to go ahead and call, we noticed we had three separate motions tonight. We're going to do each one individually, so I'd like to entertain a motion on the first. Commissioner Carpenter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the planning commission recommend that City Council approve the annexation of the one point three four five acre property addressed at sixty-nine seventy-one Federal Boulevard. Recommendation of approval must be conditioned on City Council finding that the petition filed by the applicant substantially complies with the statutory requirements.
May I have a second? Commissioner Calling?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say something.
You have a second. Are there any final comments or questions on this first motion from Commission? Okay, seeing none, I'd like to go ahead and call a vote, please.
Vice Chair McConnell?
Yes.
Vice Chair McConnell is in favor. Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter is in favor. Commissioner Calling?
Yes.
Commissioner Calling is in favor. Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn is in favor. Commissioner Tomacek?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomacek is in favor. Commissioner Mayo?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayo is in favor. Commissioner Zhang?
Yes.
Commissioner Zhang is in favor. Vote is complete.
The motion carries. I would now like to entertain a motion on our second. Commissioner Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the planning commission recommend the City Council approve the comp, excuse me, the comprehensive plan designation to mixed-use center for the one point three four five acre property addressed at six-nine-seven-one Federal Boulevard. This recommended, recommendation is based on the finding that the amendment is supported by the criteria set forth in Sections eleven-five-two of the Westminster Municipal Code.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Once again, any final questions or comments before we cast a vote? Okay, Jennifer, please.
Vice Chair McConnell?
Yes.
Vice Chair McConnell is in favor. Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter is in favor. Commissioner Calling?
Yes.
Commissioner Calling is in favor. Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn is in favor. Commissioner Tomacek?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomacek is in favor. Commissioner Mayo?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayo is in favor. Commissioner Zhang?
Yes.
Commissioner Zhang is in favor. Vote is complete.
And the motion carries. And last but not least, entertain a motion on the third item. Commissioner Zhang?
Thank you, Chairman. I motion that the planning commission recommend the City Council approval of the establishment of zoning for the one point three four five acre property addressed at six-nine-seven-one Federal Boulevard to the specific plan district. This recommendation is based on the finding that the amendment is supported by the criteria set forth in Sections eleven-five-three and eleven-five-twenty of the Westminster Municipal Code.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Tomacek. Any questions or comments on this motion? Seeing none, like to call a vote?
Vice Chair McConnell?
Yes.
Vice Chair McConnell is in favor. Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter is in favor. Commissioner Calling?
Yes.
Commissioner Calling is in favor. Commissioner Dunn? Commissioner Dunn is in favor. Commissioner Tomacek?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomacek is in favor. Commissioner Mayo?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayo is in favor. Commissioner Zhang?
Yes.
Commissioner Zhang is in favor. Vote is complete.
And the motion carries. We've completed our work on our three items for tonight, so I'd like to thank the applicant and, and staff. Appreciate it very much. Do we have any discussion on old business? Miscellaneous business?
Interim Planning Manager John McConnell would like to say a few words during this time, please.
The thought occurred to me that we might not have mentioned a very important event that happened last week, and that was the departure of our principal planner, Andrew Spurgeon. And so I don't think I mentioned that, and I apologize. He has left the city of Westminster. He's taken a similar position with the town of Erie, and so he left last Thursday, so he's no longer with us. We're really sad about that. We are currently discussing the recruitment for his vacant position with our HR department right now, and as I learn a little bit more about the timeline, I'll keep you posted.
Thanks for that update, John. He's going to be a very busy boy up in Erie.
Yes, well, they're, they're working on their comprehensive plan and a whole lot of development. They've got a lot of more, a lot more greenfield than we have, so it's, it's an exciting time to be in Erie, I think, right now.
Thanks again, John.
Yeah. From a planner's perspective, I personally think this is an exciting time to be in Westminster, so.
Jennifer, anything else this evening?
We don't have anything else, if you all don't.
All right, then, I'd like to go ahead and adjourn the meeting for tonight. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.